Do you know me?
I've been rocking wrong the entire way.
Okay, we've got to get through this because of a board of abatement meeting afterwards, so we should get started. Can I approve the minutes? Is everybody?
Yes.
That's your new job. Have you think to change about agenda?
I was here at four o'clock. What setup?
Public comments. Anything to say?
I'm here just to get a civic lesson.
Ah, not sure this is the right place.
We are civil.
I don't know. Okay, so the first thing then would be to sign this right of way grant to the state.
So has the lawyer gone through this? Were you the last one?
Yes. He did before.
Twice. Uh, we can just pick out something here.
I know this is a legal document, but I mean, there's opening sentences that say that this can be forever and then...
Then it's temporary.
Yeah. And then it goes on to sort of say temporary, but...
Didn't you ask that the last time?
No, I asked what behoof meant the last time and I failed to look it up.
Behoof?
B-E-H-O.
Phil, I've spoken to Mr. Mammy maybe twice on this.
Yes.
He says that by far the language of temporary, far now it seems, the sentence or two that says permanent.
Okay.
Says there's no way that the state can hang their hat that for some reason this easement all of a sudden is going to become...
The major right of way.
It's said that's basically says an on point.
Okay, great.
Behoof?
Behoof.
Behoof or behoof?
It says behoof.
Oh.
Behoof forever.
Oh, yeah.
Let me do, let me, I'm not sure if it was in the one that went out to you or not. So there was two paragraphs that were added, one at the request of Mr. Mammy and one at the request of Great River Hydro that actually owns an easement themselves on the property. Our paragraph was that after completion of the transportation project, it will be the obligation of the state of Vermont and/or its contractor to repair any damage done to the premises at the grant door and restore the grant door's property to essentially the same condition as grant door's premises were prior to any entry or use by the state of Vermont and/or its contractors, including grading and receiving as necessary. That was added to page two.
We have that.
Okay, and then Great River Hydro, and this kind of is along the lines of their easement as well. Great River Hydro inserted the language, and by the way, took both our signature and Great River Hydro's signature on this. Great River Hydro LLC retains an interest in the property pursuant to the restrictions contained in the above referenced quitclaim deed with conservation restriction and so joins in the signing of this grant of temporary rights subject to the following conditions: The state of Vermont shall, to the extent practical, minimize any interruption, interference, or limitation to public recreational use of the property during transportation projects. So their interest was to retain essentially the recreational use that exists today, the Sunders Falls. Great River Hydro's assent to this temporary grant of rights shall in no way be deemed a waiver, release, or discharge of any of its rights. And Mr. Mammy read both of those as well and had no issue. Actually, he requested the one that we entered. He has read Great River Hydro's paragraph. He looked back at the purchase or, not sure if we purchased or they gave us the land, but essentially their restriction or their easement on it. And Phil's done that's right in line with their easement.
Do you have a copy for us to sign?
I do. We do only have two pages blank simply because Martin and I haven't quite figured out what they're asking, but it also takes a notary. Martin can do that. And you can saw it here.
So do you need a motion?
We voted on it last week. Last meeting, didn't we?
There's these big blanks and it's hard to tell. I expect we're going to understand. There really aren't no beginning and end dates in this document. It's just the easement.
The law also said that's really part of course. Gives them leeway and, you know, projects being done by, you know, May 15th, but they need that, you know, 30th or something like that, you know, repick the entire thing. So essentially when the project's done, the easement goes away.
So two places we're solving, just one.
We say...
Just one.
This, again, the second page is Great Hydro, Great River Hydro or whatever it is. According to that now, can you do it later?
Can do it later if he's standing in front of me, so that's fine.
Okay.
I'm a bastard.
I can tell.
I know we've had some discussion about the, especially in the last year or so, since properties have been popping up that nobody knew were there, not having building ordinance, building permit, or not necessarily that way. So there was some thoughts about that, Dave, I assume.
Just to add, well, so the last time we spoke about this, the director from the board indicated that you asked Two Rivers, uh, Great River, uh, Two Rivers on a Great Regional Commission to draft up an ordinance and to see what that would look like. There is a bit of a work effort to that. Some things they seem to be able to do and some things they, if there's grant money that can be attached to it, then they more readily do it that way. So they, I spoke to them, they said that there is, they think that they can get some planning grant money to do it. So I said that, you know, if that's possible, certainly go ahead and draft up the application to do it. Move forward with that. I got an email today from Kevin Geiger, who said he's been out with family situation, so I haven't seen what that application looks like. But next meeting or thereabouts, they would, we would need to sign that the select force supports Two Rivers moving forward with the grant to draft up what would be an ordinance to look at. I think that that was really what you kind of wanted to see and to take a look at that. So that's what, that's where we're going with the next step.
What grant is that?
Municipal planning grant.
Aren't they funded by us? Don't we have to pay a membership?
We do. It's kind of a love hate thing with the regional commissions. To be honest with you, I'll tell Todd that whenever I see him. But it would be a whole lot higher if they didn't fund themselves primarily through grants.
Well, yes, absolutely, but there must be some work that they can do for us that's not grant funded since we have a membership.
So Rita and, Rita came and spent an hour, you know, at Rhodes Group.
Did you guys spend hours on the enhanced energy plan with the energy community?
Uh, there's some grant money behind that, but... So, and there would probably need to be some legal review of the document as well, so...
So if they don't get the grant, then we don't get this ordinance?
I'm clear as to what that would look like if they don't get the grant, but they seem to think that this would be possible, so kind of fits with their MO. They, the regional commission does most of... They're more readily available, you may know this, they're more readily available for items that they get grant funding for. You know, so if you pick up the phone and talk to them about a Brown's Field site, they'd be over here in like 38 seconds. If you pick up the phone and talk to them about something else to divulge and look into and it's kind of like off the path a little bit, then less of a response. But that's, in my experience with the regional planning commissions, that's kind of part of, that's pretty normal. Kind of what they...
Dave, do you know if the listers have any estimates of how many properties that they reappraised or during the reappraisal cycle that they discovered something that would have been covered by the building permit or would have required a building permit?
I would say 20 to 25 of the structures that we found would hopefully be, you know, somewhere in there. That's not even to mention any renovations or new barns or, you know, sheds or buildings or anything like that.
Just major structures.
That's not including the one we found around Memorial Day down Harpington Hill, about $450,000 value thereabouts, but, you know...
Kid or tit.
All this helps, so. It is, it is simply, you know, I've spoken a lot in the last, I don't know, almost since that day here, but more recently in the last year. It's very difficult for a town to operate effectively without some sort of structure. It needs to, you know, without that structure, it's, it's, it moves along, you know. It, for us to have done this reappraisal this year after 15 years of not doing one was extremely difficult, was very time consuming, very difficult to put together. That's not excluding the 170, you know, grievances that we had. And half of those grievances, I think, was simply because people don't know the process. It was almost as if Hartland had never done a reappraisal before, you know, people were coming in with crazy comments and things like that. I mean, it's almost, you know, literally is, is difficult to operate that way. And to be honest with you, we haven't done a true reappraisal since about 2002. We did one, it was kind of a tweak in 2006 or '07. We didn't really go out and knock on doors and get into houses. So think about for a moment in the last 18 years, the change in town that has happened that really has been picked up very little or just kind of off the cuff. So, you know, that you can say is, doesn't mean anything to anybody and we, life goes on, but I think that, you know, a lot of taxpayers that hear and understand this ask the question of, you know, hey, you know, that's a lot of development and, you know, assessed value that, you know, would help the grant list with, you know, you know, just for the sake that we don't know that it's out there, we don't know what's going on and affects the roads and driveways and everything else. It's, it's in my mind kind of an important component.
So the next one should be, what, what are the, you know, the periods of between that are recommended?
I would recommend about every five.
Oh, really? Is that typical?
Depends on the town that you're in. Towns have gone every 15 years, every 20 years or whatever the statistics tell it that it needs to have a reevaluation, but again, I got to come back to, you know, preaching, keeping the tax rate increases steady and consistent. You know, we had people that their assessments went up, we had people's assessments went down. Interestingly enough, we had a couple of people grieve because their assessments went down. But that's just, again, it's just kind of, you know, you don't understand the process, you don't do it often enough, people don't really get a grip of what's going on. And again, so, you know, the assessment or your assessed value is kind of going every which way if you're not doing it enough. Again, consistency is, in this case, a good thing. And, and keeping that valuation and consistent and, and understanding the trend is, is positive thing. Not to mention you, you know, pick this stuff up, but generally what occurs, we don't have zoning in this town, but generally as part of the reevaluation, reappraisal process is every year in between that five-year process, the listers will go through any permits that have come through the town. So let's just say a town has had 20 zoning permits for whatever reason, whether it be, you know, work done to here, there, or anything else. The listers review that yearly and make the change to the, to the lister card. That does not happen here. That would be part of that building permit process.
Yes?
You seem to be interchangeably using zoning permit and going to permit. Which one are you actually referring to?
Referring to both, actually. So both towns have a zoning permit, we do not. I am proposing just a building permit in which there's no zoning, but if you're going to build, you at least need to notify the town. So you would have somebody keeping track of who's building in town, you know, and out there, you know, keeping track of new development or, or something like that. So in our case, it would not be a zoning permit, it would truly be a building permit.
That makes more sense, but it'll surprise them to start dropping into saying zoning permit.
Uh, that's just in the process, the everyday process in towns that have zoning, that is picked up through the zoning permit is all I'm trying to say.
Zoning building permits are just what they do and how they apply.
I'm not going to get that far into it, other than...
I'm happy with your saying building permit.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not trying to be facetious.
Dave, when do you expect that we may hear if Two Rivers is going to go forward with this?
I expect to hear hopefully in the next two weeks. I think they're going, I have communicated with them to go forward with the application. It's kind of my update here today to you, which is somewhat in line with Two Rivers moving forward and putting together an ordinance language. It's just that they're not, you know, they just didn't pick up the phone and say, okay, we're on it tomorrow. You know, three weeks later, they said, oh yeah, we can do that. I think we have some grant money available to allow us to do that.
Yes, I think I left the meeting when they made the presentation on the flood plan that Kevin was going to go and do some research of other towns that were similar to Hartland that he thought had a building permit. So, so there is, has been quite a lag and...
Yes, but I, to be honest, we've been busy with other things as well, so it's been, you know, we just kind of catch up to it at this point.
And I don't know about how much we can influence their, their draft. We would hope it would be designed to be simple, short and simple. I don't know if we'll see something this thick. Two pages would be really great.
That's what they told us would be possible.
Yeah, we'll believe it when we see it.
In this case, to go to connect the dots, we're talking an ordinance, so it's a big difference compared to say a Iowa, you know, ordinance is, you know, is fairly specific.
Well, I can see how it might help the listers, that's for sure. Something they'd like to look for. That's probably people bother to do it.
Well, that's why we would have him, he would be out and about, so he would need to also, he would have office time, but then there would be time out in the, in the town looking for it.
Well, anybody else have any comments about this? So how are we coming on the tax rate?
We do not have the ta, we do not have the state numbers, so we will need to set something up for Wednesday. It can be Wednesday morning or afternoon, but I'm only available till, I can make myself available, maybe, I was hoping to disappear on a free, but if need be, I can do, I can do it anytime of the night. So, you know. Whenever time I can get three people here to decide, it's pretty straightforward. It is, once we do the math, it's going to be what it is, whatever it is to make the budget, to bring in the revenue for the budget that we have, the voters have approved is what's...
So we actually have to have a meeting? We don't just sign?
Uh, we should have a meeting and make a motion.
And is there enough time to warn this?
24 hours for a special meeting. That's why I can't have it for tomorrow. I actually would really like to have it tomorrow, but we gave it up till four o'clock today. There was some hope that we would have it this afternoon. Didn't happen.
My only kicker Wednesday is at 5:30 here.
That's the only time you can do it?
No, I'm saying my only, I'm open otherwise on Wednesday.
Oh, oh, oh.
Because you had put the word out that it could be either, either day.
Wednesday morning, what time?
Eight?
Nine. Nine?
If we can't feed the head for spurs, can, will that help?
I don't want to make any promises.
We only need three people.
Some silent on my fingers.
Sorry, nine o'clock it is?
Nine o'clock Wednesday. It should be all about four and a half minutes. Last week, the class was zero. Can't remember what Doug said. I think Doug said that the grant list went up about 3 million. It's not that much actually in the grand scheme of things.
So?
Thought that's what he said a little part of the paper.
300,000?
I heard 3 million, but...
Well, 300,000 isn't a lot.
No.
No.
I heard 3 million, I think, which isn't, you know, in the grand scheme of the total grant list. That wasn't a big, wasn't a big bump, but again, some people went up and some people went down.
Is that, is that current dollars?
What's that?
You say the, the grant list went up that amount from last year?
Correct.
And, and the amount that goes up is based on the assessments that haven't been done for 15 years?
Correct.
So 15 years are, are total has not changed very much at all?
So...
We do have an update.
We do have updates.
If, if I got this correct, if the 3 million is indeed what I, if I heard that correctly. So the thought is, is that we last revisited this in about 2006 or '07, when, 2007, right before the, the real estate market crashed. So the thought process is, is that the grant values essentially went down and then have kind of come back up and therefore have not moved tremendously. Although again, we did see, there are some properties that did go up considerably and a grouping of properties that actually went down. So it kind of offset each other, so...
That is amazing.
It is.
But my goal is we're going to go up down, particularly because also during that period there's the new houses, new development.
Those, we're comparing this to last year. Those new houses got added on. We're not, not comparing the total grant list, I don't believe, from today to 15 years ago. We're going back a year. And we did have a, a bump up. I forgot what they called that was, they, they did a change of assessments, mostly on paper without actually going out and looking at everybody's property. And of course, anybody that builds a new house, that gets added on as, as it happens.
Is that...
Yeah, yeah. You can, but I, this Merrick Campbell thing, we may be able to do it without, because everybody knows, I think that property is... because everybody knows, I think that property is, we didn't have to mention any names, we can do it. Go ahead, Dave, under managers' notes.
Uh, so--
What do we do first? Managers' notes.
Okay. Uh, and I have lost, got my manager's notes, but I had, I don't want to add some scribbles because I had, usually have a lot of good stuff that happens after I send it out to you. And, uh, looking for that. Kind of wing it. So BJ is due back August twenty-sixth. My understanding is that, that is without restrictions, so we should be seeing him on the twenty-sixth, which is about three weeks away at this point in time. So, when he was injured, we kind of had, the LCT comes and they talk to the person that is injured, and they talked to us and they give us kind of a written report. And one of the things that they outlined, particularly in this case, is that we don't have, when somebody gets injured, we don't have a provider that we can send them to, like a provider that is associated with work. Somebody comes to us and says, okay, you need to go see so-and-so, and they're looked at by a doctor. In this case, the person was injured the prior week, showed up on a Monday morning, said that they had injured themselves and they went to the emergency room. So, emergency room doctors will ultimately refer you to somebody else, in this case, that's what happened, and emergency rooms are also twice as expensive as anywhere else that you should go. So, Martin and I sat down with the LCT and kind of talked about this, and I think what you'll see from us is, Martin and I are gonna look at three policies related to workers' compensation. One is to have a provider that when a person comes to, an immediate incident, when somebody comes to see us and say, I hurt my shoulder, or I hurt my elbow, or something to that effect, we can refer them to go see such-and-such doctor and to, we did an update as to what's, what's happened to these people. That was the first item that was proposed by the LCT that we look at. The second one was to have a return-to-work policy. We've kind of winged it a little bit. Whereas if there is, if doctor states that the person can return to light duty, or can return, that there is some policy stating that yes, we can take the person on light duty, we'll put him to work, or if there's, in BJ's case, he's coming back after, you know, almost a two-month absence, you know, we work him into the process of kind of getting him in a way, and we kind of go from there. Third policy that was recommended, and we already have, had started to do this, but to put it on paper and to look at a more consistent way of going forward, is the actual first report of injury, the first incident, that we by law, I think it's forty-eight hours, we have to, seventy-two, we have to report an injury, but it's kind of tough for us to report it if they don't report it to us. So we need to kind of, we've already talked about this at department head meetings, but to put it out to every employee and to ensure that if something does occur, they notify their department head and we have them spill out in first report of injury. Even if it leads to nothing, it is on the record and it goes in and, you know, if something pops up two months later, like, oh, my back, you know, or something like that, we've got it, hopefully, they've seen the provider, they've looked at, you know, such-and-such was the response. And it's just a more formal way of kind of connecting, connecting the dots and kind of seeing this process through in kind of an efficient manner. You'll probably be seeing more of that from us as soon as we get it from Wade, and we also told Wade that we would meet with two providers that the LCT works with, for medical providers, and we would have more insight.
Who's Wade?
Wade Mezier is the, one of the representatives for the LCT passive. Passive is the insurance component to the LCT. He's kind of the guy that, you know, when we broke, when the water pipes froze, you know, he came to the rec center, heaved it hot and looked at it, kind of got us going.
So don't, don't we suspect that BJ didn't know whether he was injured or not at first?
Uh, he knew that he was sore and hurt, he just assumed that this was something that he would, or could shake off.
Just go away.
Okay.
I think that's going on.
We would like people to work that more often than not.
Yeah, okay. So we went to the emergency room on Monday morning?
On Monday, so this--
Happened on Friday.
See, this is why it's important to document it, we're a little unsure as to what day it actually occurred, who kind of in passing let Doug know, who was filling in for, for Bill, I think if Bill had been there, he would have sent it to Martin quicker. So it happened in the course between like a Tuesday and a Friday, and, but Monday morning he pops up and he was unable to work, so--
And then we have no place to send him except--
Uh, in this case, he was just like, you know, I think I'm gonna, I need to be seen
So is that going to be possible to have particular doctor or whatever to--
I think it is, I think it's, that's totally okay, if I'm not correct, I think our own employee manual states in there that if we choose to have a person looked at by our own doctor, we can.
So I, I assume we would make some effort to make this convenient for the employees, you know, so that they don't have to drive to Bennington to see this single provider or something like that?
Uh, B. Bill in Lemon, or West Lemon, or West Lemon.
Okay. And would this single provider become more or less a case manager for this? Is there, is there an ongoing role as--
Don't, I wouldn't confuse, so the case manager would be, so there's a case manager for workers' comp that is a case manager--
That would be on the insurance side, right? But on the medical side--
The medical doctor would, 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 is a medical doctor for the individual, although we would get the results of the, of the visit, so the person is capable of going back to work, is not capable of going back to work, or something a little bit more specific than what we get.
And this might be a, a provider or a practice that we would refer to?
We, somebody coming to us with an injury, we would refer them to this practice.
To the practice.
There's nobody at Scottney, you can't, that's really convenient.
You've already chosen someone in the--
We have not, but no, there's, nobody at Scottney that--
They were--
--would act in this capacity.
What did it go from there?
I believe it went to a Scottney, I think.
Yes, he went to Scottney. Scottney doesn't have occupational therapy, that's why they're not on the list.
Um, update on, so we did have here with Ben Percy case, so this wraps up one of the legal challenges that we had. So the legal challenge in this case was, he was challenging our ability to put a house lot on a parcel, so if it's a, it's just an open parcel, essentially the town taxes at the highest, the best use. So on an empty lot, it is possible to build a house, they are taxed a house parcel, I'm not quite getting the terminology right, but something to that effect. Perfectly within our guidelines, perfectly acceptable way of doing business, Ben Percy challenged that, we won the legal argument, so we did, which was our main concern on that. There is a second component on evaluation, so even if he loses the legal argument, you can still rehash, essentially de novo on the valuation. He was assessed at fifty-six, we had him at like ninety-six, and the judge gave an evaluation of seventy, with really no, it wasn't anything that we were really arguing over. He, we had said it was a non-arms-length transaction, the judge, Ben really didn't make this argument, the judge determined that it was an arms-length transaction, which makes it a, you know, you would think that the fair market value would go to the sale price, which was at fifty-six, but he gave an evaluation of seventy, because he felt as though the town's assessed values were essentially on the up and up. So, if anybody can make hundred tails out of that, I don't know, but our big, our main concern was essentially defending our ability to put a house lot on property when we tax, and that was upheld. So, I think that at the end of the day, in that particular case, the judge basically agreed with us. In evaluation, I think he just came close to splitting it in half. Delinquent taxes, tax sale continues, is scheduled for eleven AM August fifteenth, I believe we're down to five parcels at this point in time. We've had a couple of big ones come through, mortgage companies have paid, and, or they have paid, I think two or three of those, so we're down to, again, five. So hopefully we can whittle that down. I do expect to see maybe three go anyways, so, but that is progressing as we speak. Big one, the Four Corners, uh, Three Corners intersection. We have gotten designs, Dan Peck has the designs from Green Mountain Power. It is essentially a more detailed drawing of what they provide us the first time, complete burial, they do make provisions for, they needed the two, if you remember, there wasn't enough room on one coming up, so they've got a second one behind it coming up to make room for all the cables coming up from the underground. And in this particular case, the pole out in front of BJ's stage, they basically wanted nothing to do with trying to go underground to that complex, just too complex. Although they do go underground into the Matt Dunn building there, so they were able to do that, and that was the original design. They did do a design for keeping the north-south utilities aerial and burying the rest. There is a cost savings to that, and I don't know, they're still looking at, Dan Peck has to do his estimates, and that has got to go back up to the utilities, but we have gotten that back from Green Mountain Power, so it is progressing. And, you know, both Dan Peck and Green Mountain Power seem to be really positive about what they saw.
I'm happy to hear that we are, from an engineering perspective, keeping two options on the table, or three options, no, one, do not. Dave, you, in your update, you always refer to Green Mountain Power, is, what about the other seven or eight utilities? Is it, is it just clone Green Mountain Power's figures and then you--
Not the figures, so we need to send it back out to the, the other utilities for their updated estimates. It derives from Green Mountain Power because they do, where they go, the rest follow. So they do the initial design work and layout where the conduit's gonna go for Green Mountain Power, then the other five utilities follow that. So that's why Green Mountain Power is our liaison essentially.
Right. I don't want to get into too much detail, but are, is Green Mountain Power and Dan Peck assuming there'd be one tunnel where all the conduits would then be on a rack going through?
There'll be one trench line.
One trench line.
Let me clarify that. I don't, I think there'll be multiple conduits, I think there'll be one trench line.
Right. Because if I understand, these guys didn't want to share conduits, but, you know, not my backyard, it was kind of like, they were pretty clear about that.
At least with Green Mountain Power.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I don't think they want to start getting in and wrapping work around somebody else's cable. Uh, I'm kind of holding off on making this comment, but, you know, as we progress here, it's becoming more difficult, so I'll just kind of throw the wow and the volley out there. Highway Department, again, we talked about BJ, we got Doug on vacation, Skip's having some issues with his dad, so a lot of times we're running with like three people, just a real difficult way of doing business. Kind of went through the winter, plowing routes are difficult and are time-consuming. We just talked about the Three Corners intersection, there is absolutely no way we're gonna be able to absorb the Three Corners intersection and not hire an additional worker, it's just not physically possible to plow out that parking lot on either side. Matt Dunn's driveway and the, in front of Damon Hall is gonna essentially take a backhoe to do that, to get that snow out of the air. So it's not gonna be just one building's in grounds person, it's gonna be kind of an endeavor. So I am just going to say that it is important that Bill focus on some of the large-scale things. We are relying on subcontractors to do the ditching, we just did Webster Road, we got Mace Hill coming up. Obviously with no crew, we're gonna be relying on subcontractors for a lot of the culvert work that we're still trying to get through. We're still trying to talk about some paving, whether it be this fall or next spring for Queche Road, and our actual next big project for next year, all which takes time and effort. My focuses has been on the reappraisal and tax sale and some of the larger issues here, including Webster Road because Bill was gone, and we had to revisit that, so that's consumed a lot of my time. Leaving really just the core four guys to do the work, and when we lose just a guy for, even for vacation, it just becomes difficult to do the basics, which is simply roadside mowing, weighing down some material for the grader and just trying to grade, that's kind of all I'm talking about. And to unplug some culverts, so it would behoove us to think of an extra highway guy as we move forward here, and if the intersection does come to fruition, it's almost an automatic end. That being said, it doesn't help if the tractor doesn't work, I think it's still down, lost the rear tire, but it is thirty years old, luckily we even pulled it out of the garage this summer, kind of adding to our woes.
I, I, I know we're not supposed to do this, but I happened to be driving by when the bucket loader was trying to take, pick the tire up from the side of the tractor and, and move it. I, that tractor, the metal fatigue on that wheel was amazing, it just ripped out. And in a way, it's, it's dangerous, so I just, it's thirty years old.
It's on the capital budget to be replaced this year, I, Bill came back, it's one of the things on his list, hopefully to, perhaps purchase this fall, so next spring we're not scrambling to have one. But his list is long, so just know that, you know, he's trying to piece that together along with just simply the daily operations of getting the grader out there and, and mowing, but the mowing's just been, you know, one's axe new, but we had at least a two-week delay to start off, just getting the thing working.
Did we make the grant deadline for Webster Road?
We did.
Okay.
We did. They pulled it out July 31st at about 11:30 AM. And thanks for bringing that up. I, second time around, I thought they did a fantastic job. They really kind of dug in, they took out some leads in places that, I guess was a little bit softer than maybe expected, but laid down the seven inch stone. I thought that they did really do a good job out there. It was a little iffy. They too had some issues, the excavator had a few issues, then the truck had an issue or two, and it was getting close, but I think we hydro-seated it actually Thursday morning, which I think was the first, but essentially all got done. And Matt just brought, Matt Dow brought the invoice today, so that'll get submitted.
Great.
And we should be able to get papers on that. So yes, it did, it did work out well. The other mainly kind of important item is the rec center stairs. I think I've got between perhaps Jocelyn, perhaps Construction, I think it is, or Chance Woods may have somebody. I've also touched base with Preservation Trust of Vermont that gave me four or five names. That's kind of the, kind of thorn in our side for a bit, but I think all the other projects will come to fruition. As far as the activity center, we're going to do another coat of paint with the backdoor there. We have the roof at the rec center. I believe those should come to fruition, but this one is still up in the air. It's getting late, we're already into August here. But at the very least, I'd like to put something in motion to go for next spring and feel comfortable with somebody, but it's not, really not an easy project. It's kind of small, but it's not easy.
That's why nobody wants it.
The person needs to be skilled enough to do it. The last person just wasn't professional enough, I think, to provide what we needed. You know, finding that balance is kind of the struggle.
Dave, what about the roof on the vault?
They should be coming back. I expect before October, and I'll get to that. It's kind of one of those that they were able to slip the library in, they were kind of in and out, and they will probably do the same with this roof here, or door, probably towards the end of September.
Just a quick comment, we're having the book sale, we're moving the books in and out of the downstairs part of the library. The Jankowitz people were very collaborative, so thank you.
Now they're the, the operator, they're doing the job.
Gordon, I have a question for Dave that isn't quite on topic, but as some of you may know, the listserv has been buzzing a little bit about vandalism at the library or just lack of respect for the facility and leaving trash and so on and so forth. Are we seeing any of the same things at the rec center at all, Dave? Are you aware of, or is it just the library?
I will put it to, I would, I, my understanding was going on the library is kind of overall behavioral issue with kids that age. I think we're seeing some of that at the rec center as well. I don't think we're seeing, I mean, we could be, you know, whether they're carving their name into, you know, the bathroom wall or something, or I mean, it's a little bit more structured, so they're not leaving, you know, Mike's chicken wings hanging around or anything like that. But I think that we are indeed challenged by some of the behavior that we see these days.
I was at the library today watering the plants, and I looked at the front porch and perhaps somebody had just been there cleaning it up, but it was not, there was no trash around. I looked at the railing because of the listserv saying somebody had carved. There was one place where it looked like maybe a pin had put a couple of letters at the top, on the top part of the railing. Next time it's painted, that will just, it was not carved, it was just scratched in the paint. It should, nobody should do that, but I came away thinking the listserv made it sound much more drastic.
Yeah. Yeah, I stopped opening that thread after two or three reads and then, but, yeah, well, I'm, I'm glad you were able to sort of, so in your opinion, it's not as drastic as it was sounding.
I'm sure there are times when there's trash left, but there was no trash today. And there, there were two receptacles of trash.
So Dave, regarding your notes, how about the 2112 House?
So the one silver lining of the 2112 House is that we did get a positive $2,000, so that we end up getting back. So that offsets the trees that we took out, wrong hand, so we go work and use this with maybe $1,000 stuff we didn't have. But the bad news is, is it's completely back on the market. Never really, you know, I think they stopped showing it for a few weeks here where it was really looking like we thought it was going to sell, and then as things started to unravel a little bit, I think they became open to showing it again. They showed it twice last week, but the sale is, did not happen. They pulled out. They signed a letter stating it was for personal reasons and not the financing, which is why we got the retainer back or the deposit back. I've heard of various stories of kind of what was happening, I'm not really got a clear picture. It sounds like it was, was a well-thought-out plan, that we're going to leave main, come to a job in Dartford, Hitchcock, somewhere along the lines, you know, the recommendations didn't come through or something, I'm not entirely sure, but it's, anyway, they backed out.
Well, my interest is, we can drop the price. Months ago, we talked about dropping the price, you know, I guess, or September, if it hadn't sold, we haven't sold, and here we go.
So then we did drop it to 189, and at the moment, it's at 189.
It's not low enough. It's not low enough. It should be sold. There's a lot of work to be done.
There's quite a bit.
Yeah. Who was, who was going to invest in that?
But I think that we had a potential buyer. The market worked very well there. They offered considerably lower than the 189, 165, and we ended up at 173. So I think that, to a point, I think that we kind of let the market play a little bit as we progress here.
The Fed's dropping the prime, slowing the interest rate of the mortgages.
Yeah, but it's like, it's a quarter of a point or something?
Well, it reflects, that's the Fed lowering, reflects, I believe, the price of mortgages in summer. You know, buyers, you got about half a point, that's enough to motivate many buyers to...
I just, if I was in the market, I would think it was priced too high. I want to, it's been on the market now for a long time.
So the thought process is, is that there is a, there's not very much housing on the market in Harlan, and that, again, the last time I had a brief conversation on it, felt as though the price was okay for now.
Does anybody else?
I think we're putting our trust in the broker.
That's what I would say too. That's why we hired him. I hope it's been on the market for over a year, right? Like a year and a half?
Just over, I mean, we put it on in like May, and we had a purchase and sale agreement in essentially June or July, a little over a year. I think that...
The right person has to see it, that's all.
What do you think?
I'm not a real estate person, so I would sort of defer to the, to the realtor. And especially just telling that there is an offer, counteroffer situation here, so that's, that's going to take it down anyway. I would hate to go into another winter, but it is August.
Possibility, you know, just kind of put it out there.
It wouldn't be a possibility if we were in the press. People looking to move to a place, put their kids in a good school, this is when they do it, in summer, spring, summer. I mean, obviously I'm not a realtor, but I do have some common sense, and... It's July. Okay, all right. Well, that said, I defer to the majority here, but after all...
I take that back. As I'm looking at the manager notes on the agenda, there was one other item I left off.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Farmer's Market Pizza.
Oh, yeah.
It's so often that percolates. It percolated a few weeks ago now at this point in time. I visited it and it's not rested, but it's on here, and it's on here as a managerial update, because I'm just kind of looking for some discussion back from the board on this as to your thoughts of what this was meant to be. Because the more I hear, the more it sounds like a community oven, kind of taken care of by the town. And my impression or thought was that this is a farmer's market oven. And before I voice any more opinion to those involved that I've already voiced, I just want to get some feedback as to whether I'm voicing the correct opinion or not. You know, my opinion back was really stern at what we seem to end up with just about everything. You know, these ideas are out there, you know, we end up break taking it on. My response was somewhat crisp in that, you know, I wanted a much more clearer idea of how this was going to work, whose responsibility was it, and I kind of made it clear that it felt as though it was their responsibility. So I, before I venture out on that plank too far, I just wanted to know where my thoughts, whether that's aligned with you guys, or whether I should be taking a softer stance on that. I thought, when he, yeah, go ahead.
I think you're on the right track. I think they should be coming here and telling us their proposal, because I think we said we could put one in a long time ago, but, I mean, that was three or four years ago now, so.
Well, in that town meeting, oh, yeah.
And it was also Carol that was the spokesperson for, and I don't know if he's involved anymore or not.
A little, a little kind of clue is, who's involved?
Was it Carl? It was Brian's?
No.
No, this is Rachel.
Okay.
So let me come back in that they, they marked off where they, for myself and NSC to look at, they marked off where they wanted to put it. And it's my understanding that it's where they, he said the select board approved this a few years back, and so if they've come to the select board, it's where they pitched prior, which is kind of, if you've been to the farmer's market, it kind of goes in horseshoe, the little vendor stands, you know, as it comes around towards the walking track or the woods there, they've got some vendor huts set up, and then it would be, and then it ends, and then this would be kind of set up, almost like your next little place. So it's kind of parallel with the walking path, so there's maybe room for the pizza oven or whatever this is supposed to be. A car, you know, whoever, maybe taking care of it, whoever, and then there's kind of the walking track, you know, and then it's kind of in line with all the other vendor things. The site really didn't, wasn't really near and dear for me, but as I kind of probed as to how this was going to work, it becomes pretty vague in a hurry.
I don't know the history of what was presented two or three years ago, Carl, but I am familiar with the, the town oven at the bottom of Brack Hill in Norwich. What I'm not familiar with is who actually has maintenance for that. I know it's a community event, and on Fridays, they fire it, there's activity.
She was maybe once while I was there. I was running through the rec, I was running through the rec center. I'm not sure, I see John doing it, and it was in need of repair when I left.
Okay.
So that was to be determined. But there is a, there is a roadmap, so to speak, kind of like Norwich, although being in Harlan, I'm not sure I would advocate for that, because it does become a town managed...
Right, and I also worry about liability if someone frying a hand or do burns or something like that, so it's just, but I do think it's, conceptually, I like the idea. I know, I do worry about who's going to maintain it. And you're coming away saying that the people at the farmer's market are going to fire it on Friday, maybe, and...
I think the impression is to be a part of the farmer's market, but then I feel as though they like the Norwich component, where it becomes a kind of a community oven. There's this kind of vague thing that while they would have trained people, so if somebody were to, you know, want an event there, then there's kind of this volunteer that'll show them how to cook with it, I guess. After that, it gets, there is no real answer. So, you know, all I kind of heard was there's members of the community that would really like this, and that's fine. I guess my response to that is, okay, you know, who are the members of the community that would like to take care of it? It's going to end up being a liability issue anyways for us, simply because it's going to be parked right on town land, which you've got the farmer's market operating, it has a non-town entity essentially, so we're kind of owning that. But if you rent it out, you know, it would have to be kind of like a Damon Hall thing where they need to purchase a rider for the day, but, you know, right now that's, you know, add an extra to something.
How big of a footprint are we talking? We're not talking colossal, you know, shed over it and things like that, we're talking just a...
A roof over it anyways. I'm sure if there's a cement pad, it'll fall.
Well, I like Matt's idea that maybe we ask to see what the plans are, get a sense of...
I think they're going to need a little guidance to get there. Otherwise, it could be like the...
I, I had to like, to go to the market two Fridays ago, and I asked about it, you know, and I had that same sense of, there's so many balls up in the air for some of these people that, that it's not a real, they know they need to get going on it, but they're still worried about making a living selling their crops and so on and so forth.
I think there's some good people involved in it. I just feel as though it's important that they have some concrete answers behind that thought process. I'm not sure they're there yet. But I think they're going to need, before they come and spend an hour of your time, I think they need to hone that thought process a bit.
I mean, who, who is the mover and shaker? Is it Brian right now, or?
The manager.
I had, so there's Brian, so Brian's kind of the farmer's market component to this, but then there's kind of the Carl and other people, community people that are kind of a, part of the component to it, so.
We know of many towns that have this, where it's working, and you're, you really...
Only Norwich, man, it's the only place I've seen this.
Yeah, and you served me through water on my, sorry.
I had gotten a phone call from someone a couple of years ago, asking about community ovens, and I was saying, I don't know anything about them, and this person, who was doing research on community ovens in New England, told me they had identified four between the states of New York and the six New England states, and Norwich was one of them, but they were just calling random people to see if anybody knew about any more, so it's a fairly unkind...
Yeah, well, my thoughts are, we've got to keep it in New York Park, not ours, until it's actually built and operated, and then, who knows, we might end up owning it, but there's no reason why we should go out on a limb with this, let them do it, and the town has given them $2,000 to build it with. If they can't, if they can't bring it, make it happen, then I guess they won't spend that money.
I think the vote was to $2,000 each year.
Well, no.
What?
Well, they're going to be having to act all the way things are right now.
To ask for it again.
For another $2,000.
Yeah, but it hasn't been established yet.
Oh, I thought it was.
But was that $2,000? I know there's a philosophical differences here, but do we support the farmer's market as a town, other than grant them the space? Is there any fiscal...
No, so if the $2,000, so here's the split, here's where I'm, this is where I diverge here a little bit, so if the $2,000 was for marketing of the farmer's market, or it was to, you know, something to pull this together as a whole component and make it better, and kind of, you know, if they think the oven will work wonders for them, that's kind of, it's a stretch for me, I'd rather see the marketing or to build themselves a better farmer's market somehow. But the idea that all of a sudden it becomes a community oven, and where that liability and, and maintenance comes from, and caretaking, and whether it be propane, or wood, or whatever it is, it's going to make this thing go, and keep it clean, and, you know, keep kids away from it, and all that good stuff, all of a sudden it becomes a town, so, well, that's not quite what I thought was, you know, the request. I thought the request was to the farmer's market, but I could be, maybe I flipped out and didn't quite understand the whole conversation, it's kind of foreign language.
I don't spend a lot of time at the town, it's not really, but it would be more interesting to me if I could actually get supper there, and I think other people might think the same way. So...
School.
I mean, I understand what they're thinking is, it's probably maybe a good idea, but it may also be, I mean, if you compare our farmer's market to a Norwich farmer's market, it's like night and day, I mean, there's, they've got dozens, dozens of vendors over there, I mean, from school to northern, I mean, it's a lot of people, and a lot of customers, and they just have this little thing. If that's what it takes to make it work, then it's not going to work here.
Norwich farmer's market has been around for a lot of years. They're hoping this Hartland one will grow.
I just, I mean, I don't want to discourage them, I'm just trying to, from the town, thinking that's a good idea, so... It's not, should not be your job.
If they want to have it over there, and fire it up on Fridays, and maintain it, and put a bubble over it, and keep it clean, and all that good stuff, then power to them, but when I hear the discussion, it doesn't...
Doesn't go that way.
Doesn't quite feel that more of a fun...
I looked at a guy, it's one that did, has the flower business in Windsor, if he's still, that's the right name, he had a portable, and he did, he came to a few events, I think he was at the farmer's market, right about 4th of July, and...
Oh, the flower, F L O U R, oh, okay.
Yeah, but I don't think he's doing it anymore.
I don't think they're in business. No?
So, I mean, that was somebody who was working hard to make it work, and it's kind of discouraging, I'd say.
We have a much smaller population to draw from than, you know, than Norwich, I mean, they've got Hannah right there, so...
A lot of people looking for kale.
Eat more kale.
Give the whole of the message, a little bit before they venture.
Yeah. Okay, so, can we do this, Merrick, can't we? A question, one into executive session, do we have anything we have to discuss, so we can...
What's her portal time, is it 7:00 or 7:30?
7:00.
7:30? Yeah. We could, we could, are we done, all the lines?
Do we want to discuss this correspondence?
Oh, yeah, we could talk about that. Yeah, we could talk about the letter from Sylvia, please, over there.
So it's in a packet, because it came, multiple packets, addressed to me, one addressed to Gordy, I just decided to give it to everybody. As a communication, also put it in there, just simply to maybe clarify, I understand that she's perhaps has visited Bob, or you yourself, before. In this instance, she was under the impression that she could seek relief through the foot plane bylaw, and she really can't. There's really no place in the foot plane bylaw for, essentially, her neighbor's house is deteriorating, and as that deteriorates, you know, whether it be, you know, brush becoming too overgrown, and is kicking some rocks into the stream, pieces of the house fall down, or what have you, foot plane bylaw is for new development, it's not for at least a 75-year-old house, 60-year-old house, that's been there prior to the bylaws, but there's nothing in the bylaws that even rectify it, simply because the house is falling apart. So she, there is no relief there, and the tree upstream, state basically is like, leave it, so you need a permit to even cut it, so, there's, other than the, the one issue that is an issue, that certainly should draw our attention, is the culvert, which is, does have a barricade in front of it, and that is, and I'm going to discuss it with the state of Vermont, whether that be a structures grant, or discuss with FEMA, that is one item, I didn't leave out the town manager update, but did meet with FEMA last Friday, there is a possibility that that's a part of the FEMA grant, or FEMA reimbursement, because it was, it wasn't destroyed, but it was damaged during the April 15 rains, so there is a possibility that it falls under one of those two items anyways. But that's, you know, at least a year and a half process, so that's not going to happen.
Is the engineering done on that culvert?
No. So presently getting in line for an H and A study, hydrology study, which determines the sizing, the need for the sizing, and my understanding is that there's a hiccup in the state of Vermont, where there are RP for those that do the H and A studies, so they're all a bit backed up at the moment, so we can't do adding until we receive an H and A study.
She made a lot of good points. I don't matter.
But they're good points from an ecological perspective, but what's, what's the town's responsibility for Brook?
Oh, I don't know, but...
And then that question follows the Brook versus the water versus the... I am concerned about the bridge, because that's, the width is greatly reduced with on the bridgery, and I'm not sure if it's still two cars wide, or just barely, or...
It's a one-way bridge at the moment.
Yeah, I wish, Merrick, we could do something.
Yeah, the retained wall stones falling into the Brook, I mean, that's just, it's just getting worse and worse, the worst problem. Does the town have a responsibility to restore that bridge?
The bridge, yes, yeah, which we're...
That's what would be the FEMA's.
Yep, and we can, we can design, we can come up with a width until we have a hydrology study, so it was, it'll be, it'll be a bit on that one. But that, along with the Jennyville culvert, is part of the discussion as well, with FEMA and with the state of Vermont.
So have you spoken with Mrs. He?
What's that?
Have you spoken with this?
I did. She has bore, you know, there was bore to that, the road in front of her house was paved, and when it got paved, the roof got raised, and creates all kinds of problems for her cellar windows, and, yeah, it was, it was, I was there for a while.
This has been going on for quite some, yeah, she's, she's a good person, she's sincere, she's had some troubles, but, I mean, I'm saying, with the town and the road.
Yeah.
And I think she's, she's right, but I'm not sure what the town could do differently, as far as... If we're looking at many, many months before, like, the technical hydraulic study used, and then more planning, is there any sort of temporary fix we can make to the bridge this way?
Possibly.
If we do anything temporarily, does that affect us in their eyes, like in FEMA's eyes, the reimbursement, or, you know?
I have an answer for that one.
What?
No, I'm sorry.
I can't believe that. Dave, what happened to you?
Hi, you stopped me. You got me.
Wow.
Uh, it's many months for the repair, not the H and A study, I mean, it will not, the H and A study will not come tomorrow, but it's, it'll be a year and a half repair. We have 18 months to, under FEMA guidelines, to get it done, but they were quick to tell me I can also ask for an extension.
I mean, those saw horses, or whatever you officially call them, aren't going to stand up to a snowplow coming along?
No, but I know, whenever you guys start hitting me up on this stuff, I'll come back to the standby that we've known for years, this is an issue, you know, when it actually becomes an issue, it's very hard to deal with, so, you know, I would pitch that, you know, the Jennyville culvert, that, you know, this is third lash out, you know, should have been addressed years ago, so when there's actually saw horses on the culvert, and then you got to fix it, then it's an issue. So if we had done this two years ago, when the, when the lady upstream's basement flooded, then we would have had a two-year jump on this, and then maybe, maybe not, it could have been fixed, you know, and widened prior to, but, you know, this is, this isn't new to anybody over in that neighborhood.
Right, and, you know, my priority is the culvert 50 yards to the grid, out of my driveway, you know, that the road is narrow there, because the culvert's falling. So, and I'm sure every one of us has a favorite culvert that...
I know.
Well, you take donations, you know. Did I talk about an extra highway guide?
And what was that extra surplus we have, $1,000 now?
Between the donation and the...
Get some Legos and Dipo's and... It's not so far-fetched, the bridge over there is going to be built, like Legos, the new bridge, but, the plastic is, built out of plastic.
Yeah. And it's going to be done quickly.
Can we go, Merrick?
I'm glad that you've talked to her, so hopefully that's, that's good. Why don't we, do you think we need to executive session?
It's up to you guys, if we need to, we can tower into my office, or go upstairs or something.
That's for the mayor candidate.
Okay.
What did you say? Oh, okay.
God, I've been looking at that pizza in all my, I'm getting hungry, I'm just thinking pizza.
Preferred. Preferred. Don't turn us off, yeah, on the camera.
I swear, well, maybe he's just thinking about it.
I think he was just thinking about it, and, you know, when they put the posts and signs up, I think, yeah, that you can't drive heavy trucks, that would, that was...
Right, you posted that one.
Kind of a detour, which was ridiculous.
Well, I'm sorry, man, I didn't quite understand the question, so to my knowledge, there's no engineering, and what I called over the state for hydrology study, they didn't indicate that one had already been done.
Oh, I thought Willis had got something, but, so maybe just look, I don't know.
Well, it's possible. I would be... It's possible.
Yeah, in the interest of time, let's move along, given the mayor's...
Can I use the same words from last week?
Um, I'll, yes.
All right, I make the motion that premature general knowledge would clearly place the town at a substantial disadvantage.
We need a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then I also make a motion to enter executive session under the provision of Title I, Section 313A, 1 of the Vermont statute.
I'll second it.
Oh, you know, go in and say hi to Emma, or we can stay up here.
Oh, yes.
Emma's in here, drawn away. You can get Sal into...
Okay, so you have to turn the camera off, we're done.